So don't get me out of here.
Actually, it was a pretty productive day. Tuesdays are like that.
I was actually able to get some stuff done today.
They've been known to be productive. All the research.
Really?
I saw this tape on Monday. Yeah, it was a good day. I had a lot of stuff done today, I thought. A lot more to do.
Got your upstairs walls just about ready to paint now, so. I figured while they're up there painting Katlin's office, they can.
What colors you want? Just like touch up.
Just touch up. I don't like changing.
It's already recorded, just so you know.
Makes no sense.
Light grid, middle grid.
Right. I think every school is set. Ones that that's. Yeah. If there's an accent color that you got somebody wants, it's gotta be part of that our spectrum path.
I was confused about the floor stuff. You want more of the floor? The order. So let's. We want to wait a minute to see who else joins in if we need one though. Alright, so. We're gonna do the two hour meeting we talked about last time around. We're gonna do a hard close at 8:15. So I'm gonna do my best to keep us on track. We had questions, follow up questions from last week's meeting submitted to the superintendent. He has a copy of those. What I would like to do is, I would like to. Going through those questions, what I'm gonna ask is that we. For the first round, stick to the questions that we've already sent to Wayne because he knows that those are. You know, he's not getting blindsided by anything. And then after we do that, we'll come back around and if there's questions that you thought of afterwards, we can throw those out there. Is that okay with everybody? Does that sound like a reasonable? Alright. If everybody's okay with that, we're gonna start with Jim, because Jim got his questions to me first. So, Jim, it's kind of up to you if you want Wayne to just kind of go through answers, if you want to go through the questions. I mean, it's totally up to how you and Wayne wanna. Your questions.
Okay, well, I'm gonna remove my mask while I'm speaking.
Hey, sorry. Sorry to interrupt. Somebody put in the.
Kelsey is just saying that we need to speak up a little, even though we're in a smaller room than the microphone. So if we could just speak up. Julie and I tested this today. If I spoke at every single seat and if we speak a little bit louder, it does project. So we just have to speak louder. Thank you.
Alright, so everyone, use your outside voices again. Speak up as much as you can and aim towards. Jim, you have the floor. It's Wayne.
So I'm going first because I was the first one to come up with some questions. So these are in no particular order. A lot of these have a facility type base to it. But just reading them off in the order that I submitted them. Music was a concern of mine and how do we isolate and sanitize musical instruments after we use them?
I would ask Joe if he can speak to that. The elementary school is a little bigger problem and Ann may want to add her.
The goal would be to not share instruments. And also, the newest guidance that we've been looking at is that the nurse pointed out that. The singing or use of musical instruments that require blowing increases the amount of airflow. So that would be recommended to be outside. So trying to figure out how to manage having music classes outside, getting instruments outside, if we're to use woodwinds or any other kinds of air instruments like that. But basically, you know, we use the same practices that other uses we have is after use, they would be wiped down by staff members and then. Ready for reuse the next day by the same cohort of kids. One of the other things I'm trying to do is, and it's been difficult, is have cohorts of K1. That they would only be in visit for a certain period of time, a month maybe. And two, three would be the music kids for a while. So not everybody would be using the equipment. And then that way, you'd have enough things that second graders would use one set of equipment, third graders the other set of instruments, and then you could be able to. Keep it separate as much as possible. So that's what I'm working on daily in that schedule.
Jim took one quick second. Roger, I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, the meeting is being recorded. We will most likely be putting it onto the district website so people can see it, but just so you know, everyone here in the room and everyone in remotely knows the meeting is being recorded.
So the instrumental lessons at the middle grade now is part of the feeder program are individual. So if I'm playing the saxophone, it's my instrument, no one else plays it. In classes like general music where they may be learning drumming, I'm assuming that we can work with the teacher to make sure that each kid is assigned an instrument for the period and is clean and sanitized after use. So instead of migrating the drums around, so he tries a different one, probably one kid will have that one drum. So I think we're gonna take precautions regarding transfer of materials from kid to kid. And that would apply in other areas besides music.
Thank you. Second question, is Jim related? And how do we sanitize the gym after use?
So I've talked to Joe and Ann and Sean about that. Sean's still working out of the football with the custodians. I think Joe has some guidance relative to PE and he also has a plan for both gyms. So I'd like to invite Joe to speak to this.
I just got the PE guidance from Mr. Fecto today. I haven't really had a chance, kind of late afternoon, had a chance to read through it. But again, it's the same idea that the extra physical exertion causes more respiratory things coming out. Outdoors is recommended. When we have to be indoors, again, that cohort system setup where K1, so for instance, K will go back to using cafeteria as their place for their physical education. While first grade, when they meet for gym, they would have it in the gymnasium. And that way, we have time in between use of those facilities to be able to clean them and have them ready again for the next cohort. But by setting up that, that's the goal of that cohort system, is to allow the time for cleaning to happen.
I think in our physical education classes, if we can't go outside, with this equipment, there has to be pass from person to person. We're gonna limit that. So in other words, if we're teaching kids how to dribble, everybody gets their own individual ball instead of passing one ball around among everyone.
If student comes down with symptoms and is isolated, isolated within the school, do their siblings and or parent need to be isolated as well?
So I asked Jan to speak to this as she's our senior nurse. Oh, Elise is here today? Okay, well, Elise has been just as involved as anybody. So can she get to speak to it?
Elise?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, so I emailed with Jan about this and I think we decided that we were going to, if we have a student with symptoms and we're concerned, we'll call the family. Suggest that the, if the symptoms are severe enough, we'll suggest that the sibling go home. Otherwise, the sibling will stay in school if the symptoms are mild. If we find out that someone is positive for COVID, we will call. New Hampshire Department of Human Health and Services and get guidance from there.
Thank you. If a teacher comes down with symptoms during the day, who takes over until a substitute can be assigned?
So I asked Joe and Ann, as they both have experience with this kind of situation, just my group or other buildings.
So I guess I'll go first, Ann, that's alright. Seeing that people are having a hard time here, and I'll just try and yell a little louder. So this happened last year, it happened for the last seven, you know, 12 years I've been principal, whatever. You find people that are available in the building to fill in. And I say to Mrs. Abbott. Start calling the sub list. I know that so and so is available, maybe start with that. They're local, they might be able to come in. If not, then we just make do during that sort of emergency substitution with personnel that we have present.
I have to echo everything Joe said. It's the common occurrence that at the last minute, you need to find a sub and we work until we can get somebody. We'll cover it with people we have in-house until we.
Thank you. Next question is, is sort of a statement and question. We need to have a backup plan for any key staffer who might get sick or need to be quarantined. Those who don't have a clear backup, for example, Wayne or Joe or Ann, D'Orio, school nurses, et cetera, but who would take over for an extended period in case they do get sick?
So the school nurses are probably, in this situation, the most staff in regards to replacing. We do have a list going out. Our director of student services is looking at a listserv. We have a recently retired nurse who knows our circumstances very well and is interested in helping us out. So we have that kind of backup plan. At the elementary school, Kat McLaughlin, who's our new curriculum. Instruction and assessment director, does have principal endorsement and would step in for Joe. She's right there at the elementary school just by Facebook, so that would work. And then John Robinson would step in for Ann. Ann Freitag, we don't have anyone in present that could step in for Ann D'Orio, so that's a plan we need to develop. And I don't have anyone to step in for me, but I think I could, I haven't talked to Ann and Joe, but I think I could work something out. If the assistant principal moved to their spot, they could come over and sit in my, if there was something that really. So those are plans that we haven't fully developed yet, but there are plans that we could develop prior to a.
Thank you. Next item is a statement again. Excuse me, we need to make sure we continue with the normal drills, for example, fire shelter in place, et cetera, and determine how we do this during a socially distanced environment.
So there is guidance that's coming, we've been told. I know that Ann is thinking about a surprise shelter in place.
So whenever kids are in the building, like during the summer months, we have to do drills. We'll do a shelter in place during this remote learning completion, because we do have kids in the building. Last year, we did a fire drill, the year before, we did a fire drill. But the drills are varied now. You don't have to do a fire drill every month. You have to do some kind of an emergency response drill. So we're probably focused first on shelter in place, the lockdown drill. Those are, those are things that we can do without a lot of congestion in the hallways. That's what I'm most worried about in the fire drill. How do we keep the kids separated when you want them to exit quickly? So hopefully, we can get through the first few months with different kinds of drills, not a fire drill per se. But I think if we're gonna practice a fire drill, my recommendation to teachers would be. On this day, maybe you want to practice a fire drill with just your classroom so that, you know, you can get them out of the building and they know where to go. Probably do it out in small groups.
And. Basically, the same thing, you know, like Ann said, also using a lot of talking through and walkthrough what would happen in the case of an emergency. So that while we may not want to have a fire drill that really simulates fire, because we don't want people so close to each other, but we might do the same individualized classroom thing where you do it just by your classroom.
Alright, another statement, considering the school board, could consider getting a status report in two weeks regarding the COVID-19 incidents within the school. I envision it to be a Friday report listing any reported incidents. I said that this would help us keep an eye on the trends. And then this information could help us to guide discussions at the monthly meetings. So rather than wait for a four week report, maybe get a two week report.
So I've asked Andy working with the assistants, building assistants, and the two nurses to kind of develop protocols relative to report outs. So of course, their issue rolled into confidentiality, but we're trying to get the best guidance so that we can do that on open. In two weeks, that would be our intention.
It was just a consideration I did say then. Alright, next question, if a parent or a companion are made to go home due to symptoms or contact exposure concerns, how will they be paid?
So we do need probably some legal guidance, which I'd recommend in our next meeting, maybe a half hour, 45 minutes of Zoom. Meeting with your attorney. I've spoken to, I mean, if he likely be available, let's say we could meet on Friday next week, we'd be able to probably get him for 45 minutes prior to that meeting. But currently, the interpretation would be that they'd be paid sick days. If however, there was a direction such as quarantine, then it will be likely another way of which we would cover that. Their days out, wouldn't be out of their sick. So that, we have to get that kind of demarcation line between Danielle, which we have language that covers that. And being directed from a supervisor to go home because of the quarantine situation. So that's gonna be kind of a fine conversation, but we'll need to have it. Probably with the attorney and will, and it'll likely be a non-public.
Thank you. Next question, if we offer driver's ed, how do we sanitize the vehicle and ensure the safety of those involved?
So I would ask Ann to speak to that because we're currently involved in that exact scenario.
I have to practice this by saying we're grateful to Mike Abbott because he got some regulations on this adjusted. So we can have two kids in the car with the truck, with the driver and teacher. Mr. Lee's equipped the car with a box of cleaning materials. So everybody has a mask, it's wiped down and cleaned before they switch places in the car. And I think Mr. Anya feels comfortable with those guidelines. He refused to do just one kid in the car for his own personal safety. So I think we're, I think we're on, in a good place with drive red. We're gonna keep those practices up.
So these are students finishing their driver's ed from last year. And when it was interrupted in March, the guidance came through in the summer that we could reconvene. Well, all they needed was the time in the car with instructor. Special legislation that makes me. That he helped us out. We had some very concerned students and parents wanted to see that finished.
Thank you. Next question is, will we shut down the weight room at the high school?
So I asked Ann to speak to that.
So currently, we're not using weight room when school should reopen. If we have kids on site, we do have two personal fitness classes. And we'll follow the regimen for cleaning, because every piece of equipment you touch, even now when you're done, you have to sanitize it. Because kids are using that and getting, you know, they perspire and you sweat and they breathe heavy. So. We will not allow outsiders into the weight room. So it will be closed to other people just for. Classes and they're small, they're about five to six kids.
Last question is, should we obtain any dumpsters or storage units and use them to further clutter this year? Less clutter might help reduce exposure of surfaces to virus contamination. And then maybe get dumpsters for permanent removal and storage units.
So I did speak with Sean Lee and he's already on for the task. And I don't know if you want to speak to that, Sean? Well, with additional storage availability.
Yeah, Joe sent over some stuff the other day about storage units. We're still working it out while we move forward with it. If we do grab one or two, we'll be hooking on the multipurpose room. There'll be one back here or next to the unit we already have up front. You said something about trash? And trash, well, trash removal for, we're buying more trash cans. So to put in the hallways more so for the, for the kids, so it's less traffic. Be closer to us.
Okay, and then, not on my list of questions, but I didn't know if we wanted to further discuss the topic of the iWave units that we brought up at the last meeting.
So I asked Sean to speak to that. And Sean, you have to use your loud voice, but it's pretty complicated to follow this, but you'll recall we had, using COVID money to. Help with air purification, which is one of the areas that they highly recommend we pursue. He came up with a, and Sean came up with an iWave machine, but we really didn't. The implementation. Were to establish the unit, usually there's a cost that is beyond what we can do internally. And Sean has looked into that. So if you don't mind speaking to that, Sean?
Yeah. We cut the, we figured we'd put one per unit. On the bigger units, we put two. That brings our total to about 23. I got a quote right from the supplier on what our cost would be just for the units and then, which is, so we're not paying. Adding costs to those, so we're not paying like an upcharge. And then Steve Gasset from Gasset, Gasset Energy gave us a gracious quote to install them. So. What that does, it just, it sterilizes the air before it reaches the inside of the building. It'll be put on the supply side. So what it does is it creates a plasma atmosphere which kills multiple things, pathogens, mold, viruses, allergens. And that's all done before it hits our, hits, hits the children.
Okay, that's it for me.
Well, let's, let's. Let's finish up with the. Sean's recommendation, if that's okay with you guys. So. Last time, we were looking for the quote, which we have now. You know, we. Wayne, we still, I don't know, you probably weren't able to get. Order of the COVID money, but we still have some of that money coming.
So what there is, the second round, we still have money out of the 188. But the second round is being held up in Congress along with some other things right now as part of that bill. And all I've heard is that it's billions of dollars for schools. Typically, I think what's been happening is it's pretty, a similar allotment than the first one, but I don't want to go out on a limb and project that. But my guess is it would be certainly. More than enough to cover this expense, but we'd be able to cover that on our previous COVID allotment. Just, that was kind of, the conversation got a little bit, I think it was confusing because I was speaking to new COVID money, when in reality, we don't have that. We have an allotment of COVID money, the CARES Act, and we will, we're allowed to spend up to 188 out of that. And if you don't spend it, of course, then it goes back and then it'd be new yellow, or the likely is what they do with most of these types of plans. So. But if we spend, we will be allowed to spend up to 100, as long as it fits the criteria of the COVID expense due to the COVID virus and it's. This stuff. So that's why I feel comfortable. And now within, if we can install it for under $1,000. You know, it sounds to me like it's probably a good, smart thing. If we indeed are having kids in our, you know, school, find that kids in school.
So last week when we had this discussion, we were split with two board members wanting to wait and get more information and two board members. Kind of want to go ahead with it. So potentially, it was gonna put me in a tighter position. So we're gonna discuss it again really briefly, because we do want to stay on time. And I guess what I would throw out there is that. A couple of different things. So we do, and I understand we don't want to keep some money in the COVID bunch. I'm not dismissing that at all. But we have some money to take care of this, you know, with the relief money. And it's, it's an added level of protection for what we're dealing with now, but it's also something that we're gonna be able to use in the future. We have had. Flu seasons that seem to be getting worse and worse and worse. And we have had times when we had looked at our staff, we had looked at our students and we've said. Can, can we hold this class? Do we have enough people to hold this class? Everyone's out sick. So I kind of see it as a little bit of investment, because it helps to take care of some of that too, and at least address some of that. The other thing that I was thinking since the last meeting is that we, you know, at a price of, this is $14,777. You know, we. We have a policy where we have a cap set for the superintendent, what superintendent can spend, you know, at his own discretion, as well as the business administrator. And this is, well, under, I mean, it's well under that cap. So part of me was also thinking that we have, you know, people that we pay, you know, to make these decisions and analyze this. And perhaps we should let the staff that we pay, in this case, you know. Repay for their expertise. Let's trust their expertise. You know, so that kind of the thought process is that I was going on, but let's open it up quickly to you guys and see what you guys want to do. Kayla?
So I have a quick question about, so I was researching these and I didn't know the brand name, so I didn't get to look at that one. But I did see that they can release ozone, which can actually have an effect on lungs. It's only some of the units. So I just wanted to know if we had statistics on that for this machine.
Not on this particular. I will, I will research it though. So. I'm sure with, with the air that passes through there, that ozone's gonna be dispersed, because these aren't small duck lines. These are very, very large. So. But I will get back to you on that.
So it's not exactly the same, but I can tell you that with home aquariums, some of the equipment things, they do have ozonizers that help to. Basically purify the water and such. And you're talking a really, really, really tiny amount of that. I mean, it's in, it's in your house. It's kind of next to your couch. You know what I mean? So it's not, it's a negligible amount of time for ozone generation.
And that's typically for this type of thing. And most of them were, and I did somewhere had it written down, it's like point five, some weird measurement.
Very menacing.
Right, and that was sort of the FDA's measurement. So I just want to make sure we are within FDA requirements.
Anyone else have anything else for Sean? Alright, so do we want to move on this, or do we want to let Wayne do his thing?
Like, I think Sean should try to verify that question. Kayla?
Okay.
I will just speak to the fact that I was most vocal about waiting for this decision. Last week, that one of my primary concerns was the installation cost. Because we all, you know, you can buy a $14,000 item and it costs you $14,000 to have it installed. So. That was my lack of comfort level last week when we discussed this, was not having the full quote. I, I think at 14.7, it makes, I look at it more as a long-term investment, which makes a lot of sense while we have the funds to pay for it. I'm not sure how effective they are. I mean, kids, you can clean the air, but the kids are still gonna be, you know, it's not. So, but I just wanted to clarify that my primary objection last month, last was the installation cost. And that perhaps not part of tonight's two hour discussion, but I think his takeaway is I still think we're looking for a breakdown of the CARES money. And this kind of got lumped into that, and that still is a big question for me.
Kayla, if you look on the back of page three. Armful byproducts is no.
Well, that was my only concern, wasn't it?
And I just want to say, because I was on the fence too, that I agree with everything Julia said, and with the installation, thank you so much to Gasset Energy, because that really makes a big difference.
Yeah, that's, that's a gift, for sure.
And I want to point out that both of you two made a really good point, especially wanting the information because we don't really want to have the running blank checks, it's not just the responsible and all that, so. You know, I don't want anyone thinking that, oh, they're standing in the way of, no, they are making sure the checks and balances happen, and that's very important. All right, so that being said, what we want to do, because they want to keep us on time, you're going to be next.
I think Wayne, we give Wayne
Give Wayne the
Yeah, the manager.
I appreciate that. I would just remind the board that typically we take this to a facilities committee, and Julie and Jim are on, it used to be Sean and Jim. We, and then we can get it and bring it to the board, but because summertime is so different and this is kind of an urgent request, so we appreciate going along with this.
We put it in your ball, ball court, Wayne, so it's
Appreciate it.
It's your decision. All right, okay, Holly, you're up next, you have the floor.
So can everybody hear me with the mask on?
Why don't I do this? Why don't I walk the mic around? Because I'm probably the least important one here right now. I'm just running things, and I can do that while doing the mic.
And the portable mics will be here tomorrow.
Okay. Let everyone know portable mics tomorrow.
All right, is that any better? Should I take?
I'll just
I'll step away and I'll take it off.
Yeah.
Back up six feet. All right, so that's probably better. All right, so my first question, we've actually kind of answered it, just so everybody knows. My question was that will the staff have to use their contracted sick days if they need to quarantine, or, you know, if their doctor tells them to go home? And I included some links to the FSCRA, which is the first, Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which does appear to also cover public employees. So I asked that Matt Upton, or Andy or Matt Upton, look into that. It sounds like we're going to get that from Matt when we meet with him, Matt Upton, so.
I can say that a member of the HPR group
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you when it's, sorry.
I'm a member of an HR group. We have this whole spreadsheet already done that goes through all of what, what happens if you do this, what happens if you do this, what happens if you do that. So that, that is the information that we have that is available for all employees if they have a question.
Okay, would we be able to get that and see it, just so we know? Thank you, that'd be great.
I just got it this afternoon, so.
Awesome, thank you. My second question was, what was the plan for subs to ensure enough coverage? And what is the plan if we don't have enough coverage? Because my question, for the reason I asked this, was on a few weeks ago, in his press conference, Governor Sununu was asked about subs, and he said, quote, that we will need a lot of subs for when teachers get sick. That was his quote. So, you know, subs are a problem all over the place, so what are we doing there? But I think Ann somewhat kind of off answered that, sort of, but.
So in any emergency, we're always short of subs. And we sometimes have staff will step up and cover classes, sometimes we close ISS and have that person cover classes, sometimes I cover classes. So we, we do look in-house first if we can't get somebody, and we always have somebody in the study hall or the library, so we can have coverage for those, those areas with staff members. So it's always an ongoing issue, but with this pandemic, I anticipate it's going to be pretty tough. Yep?
So there's one upside in that with colleges, many of them in remote learning, there are some days when we could access students, college students who have helped us sub during vacations, during their school vacation. So there are a few more people, but we anticipate some difficulty, and we're doing, we're doing more advertising than usual in hopes that some of the people that are looking for a way to get into New Hampshire, which seems to be more than usual, can see our opportunity to come here and sub, and it would likely be more frequent than a typical sub assignment.
And then just another point under subs was about nurses. I know you said we have an agency that we go through, but on the legislative committee call that I, that I listened in on last week, I believe it was Manchester, but don't quote me, one of the bigger, they had, that have a nurse in every building. They said if they're unable to find a nurse for any building for a day, that they would close, like in elementary school, they closed one of their schools. So I know we aren't probably going to make any decision like that, but I don't know if it would get that dire.
So I know that Joe and Ann have had experiences where the nurse wasn't available during the whole season, so I don't know if, maybe we could ask Joe to speak to that, or Ann first and then Joe.
That's okay, I need my steps.
So often when the nurse is out, there is still a nurse on campus, so we share the nurse between two buildings. I mean, it's what, maybe a five-minute walk? If there's a real emergency, you know, we, we act upon it and we'll have the nurse come, or we'll, we'll call family and, you know, for somebody who falls and gets a concussion, that's a different kind of an emergency than this, but it's something that we often have to deal with, just having one nurse on campus. And as Wayne mentioned, we have a nurse who's recently retired, and I think she knows our system very well.
Did Joe want to add anything to that?
Nope, sounds like
No.
Back to Holly.
And I don't remember if we talked about this last month, last week, so I apologize if it's a repeat, but the governor also said in this press conference of, you know, whatever, two weeks ago, whatever it was, that they were going to be making a statewide learning management system available to all districts for free. I've heard rumors that that's Canvas, I don't know if that's true, but would we be taking advantage of this? And what is it, like?
So we did investigate when we were putting our teams together around the our steering committee plan. And we did some training with Office 365, which provides a little more security in our mind, but we've agreed to cherry pick the free system. I don't think it's called Canvas. It is Canvas? Okay, so. But there were some issues. I know that our director of technology feels that we might give up some security. So we need to cautiously go into that, but it's free, and we did check that out.
I spaced that, sorry.
I wasn't even thinking either that it was My next question was like a multi-multi-part, as you probably have seen. So it involved the, it was about the recommendation from the, from the middle high school, which they're labeling hybrid, which actually, when you really look at it, it's not hybrid, because there are cohorts on different days. It's actually the same as all-in, is what kind of the elementary school has with the mandatory option that the governor said has to be mandatory. So really, it's really high, all-in, but, but for purposes of how they labeled it, I'll refer to it as hybrid. So on page eight of the plan that we were given last week, students will be receiving instruction in an ancillary, this is if there's too many kids for one classroom. Students would be receiving instruction in an ancillary location or remotely would be required to join the team video conference with the in-person cohort, which is the kids that are in the room with the teacher, as specified in their schedules and that technology allows. So that sounded, and I know we went around last week, and I think we got two different answers, so I wasn't sure what the right answer is. So I'm going to move part of my question. It's not the first bullet point, but I wanted to say, so walk me through, Ann, if you, if you can. So you have 8:00 AM math class, too many kids, they get split up. So yeah, the kids here with the math teacher, the kids in another room with somebody else, and then kids who chose the remote option. Walk me through how that's going to work. What, who's going to be doing what?
So there's
Oh.
A couple possibilities. So let's say I'm going to do a lesson today that everybody needs to see the direct instruction for. If I'm being recorded on the screen, it's me, not the kids in the classroom. I'm delivering the instruction, I want kids to see me model how we solve this problem, how we use this graph, whatever it is I'm doing. So if you're remote, you can see it on your computer, or I record it so you can see it later, but you're not seeing everybody in the class. That's one model. The other model might be that today I'm teaching a lesson to you people. Tomorrow, you're going to go to a different location and work on applying it. You'll have the directions, you'll have somebody who can answer questions, maybe, but you're going to be doing some independent. I think it follows, if you remember, we had the model of learning where gradual release of responsibility, where I do, you do, we do. So hopefully, we're going to be able to shift that model with this. There's only a few classes that we're going to have to do this with. I looked at the numbers today, there's very few classes that have large numbers of kids, say 20 kids. We have very few classes like that right now. Most of them are in the middle school. So I think, I think we have the opportunity to really move on that second model where I'm teaching and you're practicing it when you're away from me, and the next day you come back and I teach you something new, and while the other kids are practicing it. So I do know some exciting news about this, is for instance, Jody Holmquist just got certified to be a NearPod instructor. She was so thrilled with this method, and she's hoping that she can do it, teach it, use it in her classroom while other kids are in different locations and still receiving the direct instruction. So this, it's kind of promoted some different thinking about this, but I do know we want to steer away from recording or video recording any kids in a classroom.
So so, so if you're, if you're, you're doing the part where you, like you said, you want to teach it to all of us, right? So will the teacher who's in the room with half of the students, who is teaching it to all of them, be video conferencing, I think is the word that's used? So the kids in the ancillary location will be watching that on the smartboard or on their laptops or whatever, and the kids at home will be watching it?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I don't like what we're doing right now.
That's really good. Okay, that's good to, to visualize it. So my, my question, my first question then now circle back to it is, do we have the bandwidth to support that in the building?
I think we can do it as long as not every single classroom in the building is doing it at the same time. It's not unlike when we do math testing. They've done a lot of practicing, how big is our bandwidth? Can we, how many kids can that test at the same time? So a video is a big chewer upper of bandwidth, but not everybody's doing it at once.
And then my other question with that is, I guess this applies also for videoing yourself and putting it out there, which a lot, a lot of teachers already did in our, you know, hurry up, we got to do it right now, remote learning model. Is privacy or legal concerns, and this might be also a question for Matt when we meet with him, but I've, I've been on different groups, like the NHSBA. I joined something from the NEA, something from the School Administrators Association, you know, just so I could see, you know, different, different points of view. And, you know, what are the, the concerns about, you know, if, 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 if a teacher's doing that piece where they're video conferencing out, live teaching, and people are watching at home? Like, what are concerns? Like of unknown people observing the stat, observing that happening, like you're, you're zooming out, I know we don't use Zoom, but that's an easy term. Video conferencing out, and your student's there, but they have a family member, somebody sitting there watching, and I know you can't, they probably don't have the capability to hit record on their computer like we're doing now, but they could have their phone, they could have whatever. And you, no matter what way you set it up, your classroom, you could still hear students when the teacher asks them a question. What if they have to, you know, redirect, or do somebody kind of, you know, or the kid answers a question wrong and they get embarrassed because who knows who's watching? Somebody posted on one of this groups that other states have had problems during the springtime when they were doing live teaching like that, that what happens if a kid takes video, or whomever takes video, manipulates it, puts it on some kind of nefarious or racy site, does whatever? I mean, and New Hampshire, you know, we, we'd have to know, like, what, I mean, we wouldn't be doing the recording, but like every, New Hampshire's a state where like, is it illegal to record anybody without their permission? So like, how is all that going to happen? And there's just a lot of iffy-ness with, on the receiving end, not us, but on the, you know. So those might be, I know, I'm sorry, Wayne probably got my questions and went, oh my gosh, because they're very specific, but.
With that question, I thought the, the attorney conversation would probably be worth the, you know, whatever we spent, because it is very complicated. The general guidance is that as long as they're noticed that this is being recorded, you know, much like when you pick up the phone, you dial someone, and personally, aside, I want you to know that this call will be, or may be recorded. So you do need to notice people that this is being recorded. Whether that there's, the advice that I've heard is that you do not need to, under these kinds of circumstances, get permission in writing or, or any verbal permission, you just need to notice them and you need proof that you did. So I think if we're, if we're okay with our attorney next week, that would be definitely a question we'd want to ask, ask him.
And the elementary group also, and I'm sure the high school's going to do it also, we've talked about setting up the expectations too, that, you know, you're not going to have, you know, you're going to have a quiet place, so you're not going to have interruptions, and, you know, the rest of the family is going to try and adhere to those things. And just make really clear expectations about what we would think would happen, and, you know, inclusion in that would be recording, you know, and making sure that people are informed ahead of time that that's not going to be acceptable, and there's ways to find out if you do something about, like, that's inappropriate.
And, and just so, what, what prompted me to even ask that question, go down that road, is when I watched that legislative, that joint legislative committee meeting, every, every representative or senator that was on that call, you could see them, but Senator Khan had them go through and say, I'm, my name is such and such, I am in my kitchen, no one else is home, or one person was like, I'm in my kitchen, my teenager's asleep, they may walk through here. You know, so that's what got me thinking that, oh my gosh, you know, people in their homes watching, you know, so that, just so you know where that came from. And that was like Exactly, yeah, yep. So okay, so furthermore, going a little bit more with this team video conferencing option. So how is mandated reporting of like student care concerns? I guess is the best way I can put it. If it's, if a teacher sees into the student's home and sees something that is not good, that normally they would be a mandatory reporter about, how's that handled?
So
That might be a Matt question.
We certainly, that's definitely a Matt question, but my understanding is if you see something, you know, a little kid gets hit in the background, whatever, you'd have to report it. Do you see why you have to call it? Do you have a choice being anonymous or not? So that part would need change as far as our obligation to report, but we can check that out.
All right, so some of my other questions about teleconferencing that I kind of added, and I'll wait till we all get through our questions, things I thought of later that are still related to that, but kind of more of broad of the hybrid model, so I'll, I'll swing back on some of those. Just in case you're following along with what I said, I don't want to throw something out there. But so on page 33 of the plan that we were given last week, it's mentioned that paras will be provided training to support ancillary instruction, which I assume means the half of the class that's in the different room in the building. So, um, let's see, so, so the teacher will be instructing one of, half the cohort live. And the para, it says, then on page eight, because it's kind of, there's two sections that kind of repeat. Page eight, it says that para will, that they, that the cohort that's in the other room will be supervised by HMHS staff supervisor. So I'm assuming that might be a para, if paras are going to get training in ancillary instruction, and if so, and this is another Matt question, I guess, so I don't, I don't know, I hesitate to ask it, but can paras be in charge of a class?
So I would, that was definitely a Matt question, but I'd like to just speak to the issue of the para in another room, would not be a para providing direct instruction.
Okay, that was my second follow-up.
It would only be the teacher providing direct instruction, and when we get to the conversation about whether we need to reopen, you know, impact bargain or create an addendum for contract, that would be part of that conversation. I would ask Kat, if she could, Catlin McLaughlin, if you could please speak to that as well, as she's our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Right, paras will not be providing instruction. They will be supervising students who have already received instruction from teachers. But the teachers will be responsible for delivering the instruction to students, and then the paras will be there to support students who'll be given like practice And then the paras will be there to support students who'll be given like practice assignments.
Jo, did you want to add anything to this conversation?
No. No.
Nothing good.
Thank you, and, and thank you, Kat, and welcome. Thank you. Um, my, so that, that's my question from what I had sent in about, about that, uh, the hybrid model. So my next question is surprisingly, because I never have facility questions, this is kind of a facility question. So we had, um, we upgraded to the MERV, I don't remember what it was, 11, 811, whatever. Um, in that call, um, that legislative committee call, now granted, this was a much bigger district. I believe it was Manchester increased like to the MERV 13 from whatever they had. And they are reporting that they're going to have an increase in edu, uh, bleh, energy costs due to the upgrade. There's like $100,000, which obviously would never be us because we're so small. But, um, by upgrading to the MERV, which is totally, we understand we had to do, will we see an increase in energy costs?
So very slight, but I would ask Sean to think to that, uh, you know, you're more pressured to push air through smaller.
Yes, so based on 150 parts per million, um, a MERV 11, which I'm proposing, cuts that to about half that it, that it allows through. Well, particles, we'll just say particles, 150,000 particles, MERV 11 allows, allows about half of those particles to come through. Uh, if you go to a MERV 13, it's about a quarter of the, a quarter of them. But then you're putting a lot of strain on your air handles. In which I don't think it's wise for us to, to do that, especially if we can move forward with, with eye waves to help get the rest of those particles. Um, so, but yes, it's going to increase our, our, our electrical costs. But let's try to lessen that a little bit by not trying to, not go with a MERV 13. We'll go with a MERV 11, save, save our units for some longevity. Does that answer your question?
And that's where the eye wave will also help.
It'll help, correct.
All right, yep, that's good, that answers that, thank you. Um, and, and I, I, I think I know the answer to this from last month, but last, last month. It feels like a month, I keep calling it last month, last week. Um, some other districts are reporting, and these are also large districts, that, um, the cost associating with implementing all these protocols, these COVID protocols, are called, are greater than what they receive from the CARES Act. So I just wanted to, you know, ask the question is, the, what we are anticipating having to spend to do all this, to have people in the building, i- is it going to be more than what we are receiving from the CARES Act?
So I will, um. I will do my best with, with the question. And of course, the, the answer depends on where we go. If we implement the recommendations by the steering committee, uh, I can, I can, I can say that we'll likely need, uh, some of the additional cares money or just the second round. Uh, but I'm fully confident that we will receive it, especially if we're in, if we do implement those recommendations, because I think there will be an interest in making sure districts that open in some way uh, in the school building, uh, would be, would be able to access that fund. So I don't see us in any way having a barrier to the funds. We qualify in just about everything when it comes to competitive grants. So we have a high percentage free reduced lunch, I mean, all those kinds of things that they use when they, when they look at who qualifies. So currently, uh, we're, we've got that 188 on the books. And I mentioned that we had allocated about 50 for, uh, the kinds of staff, uh, and then about 40 for compensatory ed. So we're, we're under, certainly under the staffed, at this point, we can talk a little bit about it when, there's another question later. Uh, and we're pretty close to the compensatory ed, and Julie can address that. So I do think we're going to be good. And I've been dealing with ESA-like funds, uh, as a superintendent since 2002, as assistant then. Uh, and 2009, when the Obama money came through because of the huge crash. I, so I've seen these things cycle through, and I'm basing my advice to the board on my experience. And I see this as, as no different. In fact, I think there's a greater sense of urgency to get money to the schools now than there was after the financial crash in 2009. So I'm, I'm very comfortable that we'll make this go with the money we have. And so far, I don't see anything that's outside the bound. Uh, the transportation costs were not as great as I thought in relative to the additional expense. Meals are not going to be that great. We've talked about some facility issues, I don't think they're that great as costs. And because we're looking at building those additional days possibly in the beginning of the year, we could take care of some of the PD expectations. So I think we're in a good place right now, um, and so I'm confident we can do it financially.
Thank you.
I'm getting close. Okay, so, um.
So we're, we're an hour in.
Okay, my next question I won't have to ask because we're not using the weight room. Um, so, but, but, okay, so the next question is about sports. Um, there was a tweet, um, about fall sports signups, which I believe was the day after our last board meeting. So, um, you know, we had not talked about that at the board level, you know, so I saw the tweet. And so, um, will the final decision about fall sports be made by the board? I know Menanok has come out with their, um, proposed plan that their board still needs to work on. And they're, they're having no contact sports at all this fall, totally, none, none at all, things like that. So I know, as other districts are starting to come out with their proposed sports is addressed, so.
So if I could address that, uh, we do have fall signups currently going, but obviously, it's a board call. We don't have football, so that's the area that seems to be most controversial. If the NHIAA moves ahead, which looks like they are, we would have soccer and cross country. And I think we have very few in cross, maybe no one because our coach.
Um, the purpose of the signup, the tweet for the signup was to just gauge interest. And we had 64 kids say they want to play a sport. Only six of those were interested in cross country, and we have yet to get a coach. So I think the interest is there, but whether we do it or not, I, that's not.
Yeah.
That will be a board call, it's a program, this is, you know, we do the scope and sequence, and the board decides if we're going to have a certain special world language. I mean, and, and extra or co-corrective activities are the same, it's in your purview. We don't ask you every year, once you endorse it, we, we get to go with it until you tell us, okay?
Yeah, okay.
Um, and, all right, this is the last of my questions I emailed in. If we ever, if we get to it, I have several more that I thought of since Saturday night. But, um, so, um, so, so regardless of what the NHIA, NHIA decides regarding sanctioning sports. So, um, one thing we have seen is, over the summer, several of our students have been playing AAU basketball for the past several weeks. Um, so, and, and there've been photos out there where they're, you know, the adults on the bench are wearing masks, the kids are sitting right next to each other like it's just a normal day. Um, and, and then they're, you know, obviously playing without masks. And basketball is, you know, defined as a contact sport. So, um, will we, knowing that, knowing that, you know, in general, we don't know what people have been doing over the summer. We've seen photos on social media of families going to vacation in hotspots and things like that. And AAU or travel teams, I don't know the extent, I tried to look on their website, it wasn't user-friendly, so I'm not quite sure how much they've been around. I know they've been over in Hampton playing. So if they could have possibly encountered other teams who've traveled from hotspots to hotspots, are we going to, are we able, and this might be a Matt question as well, ask them to self-report that they've been to different hotspots, not only them, but even staff? I know in my office, if we, we travel outside of certain counties that are greenlit, um, we need to let them know, hey, I went to, you know, whatever, Florida, God forbid, Florida, this weekend. You know, we need to let them know that, so, yep.
So DA schools, uh, we don't have any oversight relative to DAU, but we, I know their program ends in mid-August, I, so I think we'd have 14 days. We can certainly ask anyone, uh, questions relative to self-quarantine, but I would suggest our, that we speak to our attorney in regards to what we can demand. You know, we can ask something, and then if they don't give it up, where, where do we go from there? So those are questions we can, we can, we bring to the attention of our attorney.
Okay, like I said, that was my last, uh, given question. So thank you.
Okay, um, and Julia, your questions came in at virtually the same time as Holly's, like within, like a minute. So you're next.
Hey, well, in looking at my questions, I think probably based on our time limit and what it is, uh, where our priorities need to be, um, some of them I'm not going to ask as they relate to financial questions that I certainly do want answered and that we certainly need to look into further, such as the breakdown of the CARES money. I would agree with Wayne that, um, you know, federally, federal government is now obviously very strongly supporting school districts that decide to return in class in some way. So, um, in order for them to continue for that push, the federal money is, is going to be available for that. But I still feel like, so a lot of my questions were based more financially, um, with some explanation of the allotment of the current money to include the PD money. Um, and, and then another one of my questions, it sounds like we've already kind of talked about, we need to talk to Matt about that first, as well as a Primex webinar about what liabilities are. Um, so I think that's another topic that we're going to be taking up anyway.
Wayne was going to address liability, do you want to?
Oh, sure, sure, that'd be great, thanks.
I, I do know the answer to the liability question. Uh, Primex will cover us as long as we take reasonable precautions. Uh, and if we adopted the plan that the steering committee recommended, uh, we'd prove masks. So that's above and beyond, I think, what a lot of people are doing. So it's just like if, you know, anything else, uh, as long as we are responsible, our current carrier, Primex, has agreed to cover our risk.
Okay, good. I, I reviewed that webinar, and I know, Sean, but I just wanted to make sure that we were comfortable with what the liability for the school district was, you know, if we decide to open and, you know, God forbid, somebody gets sick. Um, we talked about in the plan, there's a written plan that students would have to sign a waiver for transportation. Is that correct?
So I would, uh, we, the transportation subdivision, uh, has determined that we would recommend that the parents sign a waiver if the student rides on the bus, just to make sure.
I agree 100%.
Heighten the, this is your assigned seat here, is what we're doing. If you don't do that, because we may or may not have additional supervision.
Right, right.
So that was, that's not a mandate, that's, that's what we're recommending.
Right, and I support that 100%. My next step for that is the, my next question is, um, are we going to, is there a recommendation that the parents sign a waiver to send their kids back to school?
So we could speak to our attorney about that. Currently, we don't have that recommendation. Um, you know, I don't know what that would look like. Uh, I'll certainly look around and see what other districts are doing in that regard. I, I think the expectations that we have with the discipline that we would have, the expectation would be clear with the expectations that we have with kids. And that if they violated, parents would know that, that would be part of a communication. But to sign a waiver, I'm not sure that there's anyone promoting that at this point. I don't know, Ann or Joe, I haven't heard if there are, this.
I knew, I, we discussed it for transportation, and I didn't know if that would, uh, the waiver. Um, and so I was, put off some of the financial discussions so that we can get to the more important determination of what the fall's going to look like. I always want to talk about the money. So, uh, as I spoke, we were openly last meeting, screening is a huge concern to me. Uh, I am at, not at all comfortable, um, leaving the elementary school screening up to the parents 100%. Um, and I know that we did get some additional information that we probably do plan on, on screening the students at the middle school, high school level, as well as all the staff and everybody that enters the building. Um, but I do feel that we need to take the responsibility to do this screening and figure out a way to do it and not leave it up to the parents. Parents sent their kids to school sick before with the flu and with everything else because life gets crazy and they needed us to do that. I, I unfortunately don't have faith that that won't still happen. So in order to protect the kids whose parents were, you know, who would keep them home or to protect the kids and staff regardless, I feel like we need to take responsibility for that screening if we are going to be exposing everyone to these kids.
Can I say I agree, not that we're voting, but I agree.
So I would ask Elise if she's available, and Ann, uh, to maybe speak to that. Elise, I think you're, if, if you're there, uh, hopefully you heard the question.
Hi there, yeah, I am here, I did hear the question. Um, so currently, um, CDC guidelines just came out on July 23rd, um, for screening in school, and they do not recommend that, um, schools be screening. I can read, I have the quote right here. Um, it says, "CDC does not currently recommend universal symptom screenings." That means screenings for students, for all students grade K through 12, be conducted by schools. "Parents or caregivers should be strongly encouraged to monitor their children for signs of infectious illness every day. Students who are sick should not attend school in person." So that's what the CDC says, and then the New Hampshire Department of Human Health and Services mimics that same quote. Um, they have the same guidelines. Um, some concerns that Jan, the high school nurse, and I brought up, um, we did construct a letter and submitted that to, um, the steering committee. Um, some concerns that we have are that it's not feasible time-wise because the person that's doing the screenings are going to have to dress in PPE. And then we're concerned about excessive use of PPE. Um, we need to be conservative enough with that. Um, the other issue is the children being asymptomatic, and they're not reliable reporters. Um, and then if they're, if they don't have fevers, um, we won't be able to trace that. The other last issue is the HIPAA issue. Um, children and staff members have the right to, um, to have their health information protected um, by a, uh, healthcare professional. And just anyone doing the screening, it will be too difficult for one nurse to do all of the screenings in the school. Um, I don't know exactly how HIPAA plays a role yet, but we know there's going to be a lot of complications around HIPAA.
That's all right, I can talk my own. I certainly do appreciate your input. Um, we did get the, uh, get the links that you sent us on the latest guidelines, Ann, for all those links you sent. I feel pretty confident that all of us had, had also done our own research on that, but I appreciate any information that can be sent forward. Uh, I understand that in large school districts, especially one even across the river in Braderbro, that screening is more of a challenge. Um, and, but in our school, one of the advantages is our size of school. And I, I feel like it is something that certainly is feasible to be done. I don't, um, I, I hear what you're saying for, for the guidelines, but I do have, I have heard an awful lot of our specific school community speak pretty loudly about, um, their concerns of us not performing some sort of screening.
So if it's okay with the board, uh, we would like to look at, at maybe some other options around this and maybe present that next, the next time we meet. I don't think we can resolve this tonight because I don't think we have a procedure.
I'm just making it, I, I just, we were asking questions, it came up last Wednesday. Um, I had hoped there would be a start of this discussion because I think we made it pretty clear last Wednesday that it was a really hot topic for us. So I had hoped that those discussions had already begun.
The school nurses and the administrative assistants met on last Thursday, and this was extensively discussed by everyone. And Elise is the one who gave the report after the meeting. Um, the biggest problem is, is the HIPAA. And we, it would take, they estimate it would take the nurses, because they would have to do it themselves under their license, approximately three hours, three to four hours to screen everyone.
I understand we don't know what the HIPAA implications are now. I'm not asking for your personal health background. No, 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 I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying, that's what was discussed at the meeting.
Right, okay.
No, and understood. But I know in my office, anybody that, that comes to our office as a customer, as a vendor, as a potential client, it's very clear when they enter our space, they're going to get that. their temperature screened and they're going to be asked some health questions. And there's absolutely, every business that I know of is doing the same thing. So I got to imagine that the HIPAA issue would have been addressed at the corporate level as well. I'm not asking, if you tell me you have underlying conditions and you can't come to school and that's why you choose to come remotely, I'm not asking what they are, I'm asking you to make that decision. I'm also not asking, not going to share the information, you know, little Johnny had a fever of 100.6 today, so we sent him home. Well, if little Johnny had a fever of 100.6 on a non-COVID related day and he went to the nurse and got a temperature, we're going to send him home, or that's going to be an issue. I'd like to, I'd like to know where the HIPAA is going to dictate that, that we have, what we have, how we have to handle that, because corporate America's been doing it this way for months.
Can I make us, make a comment that might help Wayne, Julia, on your time? Do you mind if I ask?
Yeah, I know.
Okay. So today, and I just briefly looked through this afternoon, I didn't read through it, well, actually, it was Fall Mountain put out theirs today, and I didn't read extensively, but Mananuck put out their proposed plan that their board's going to vote on on August 4th, and they addressed this pretty, their whole plan is laid out very in graphs and charts and very easy to read. So maybe look at, you know, as a guideline, let's see what some other districts are doing. Mananuck is doing screenings in various times, like I, one thing I believe, and I don't want to misquote it, but is before the child gets on the bus, and they're telling parents that, and if the parent brings the kid to the bus stop, the parent can't leave until the child is screened, you know. And I'm just not saying that's what we should do, but I'm just saying other districts, how they're handling it. Same with masks, they're requiring masks, I believe Mananuck is and Fall Mountain is it, or that's split, one of, you know. So I would just, as things are trickling out, we could even look at some of these, and they're a big district, so, you know, we could kind of model, if that would be helpful to kind of look at others too.
Okay, so we'll just leave that as we're going to continue to look into the screening. Wayne? I'm sorry to interrupt, but will staff be able to ask questions tonight?
So the board's going to get through their questions first, and I'm trying to keep everybody on track. We will try to allow for some time at the end, but it depends on the board's questions because we are trying to keep it to two hours.
Okay, please recognize that we have a very stressed out staff and we are on standby, respectfully waiting to speak.
You have a very stressed out school board too, so we totally understand.
Okay, I think that for my submitted questions, like I said, I'm going to take all the financial part because I think that as Mrs. Gregory pointed out too, we need to address the, you know, the stressful part is the health piece and are we going back to school and money piece, we'll talk about all that later. I do have other questions, but they weren't what was submitted, so that's all I want to talk about, right?
Okay. So Kayla, do you have some?
I, I do have submitted questions.
Just that, and then we'll, then we'll, you know, see if you want to go around again. You know, I do want to leave some, I mean, if we can, I do want to leave some time for public, but, I mean, we need to get our questions answered, so.
So I feel like some of them are not important now because there's big overwhelming things I think we really do need to get into. But one of the things I have was if we go remote, or if there's, there's obviously going to be a remote aspect regardless of what we do because we're not going to force children to come in. So can we provide staff with technology if they need it? Have, because I know we discussed adding technology or devices to what we had already ordered. Has that happened? Are we planning to? What's the plan?
Julia, yeah, speak to that. Debbie's on vacation this week and she's actually, where she can't access technology, but Julia can speak to it if it's okay?
Yes, I'm here. You can hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I was asked this by someone today, and I'm speaking for Debbie, although I shouldn't be, but what Debbie suggested was that there are dozens and dozens of desktops that we no longer need in the two schools. And Debbie has offered that technology to staff, so they're covered from home. They can also be requested by teachers to be put into the classrooms should a para perhaps need to exchange papers with a student on a desktop. The para could get, I'm sorry, on a laptop, the para could get onto the desktop.
So follow-up question to that, if they use the desktop, is there going to be a camera? Because that'll be the biggest aspect of needing technology.
I would think that we, I don't, I can't answer that definitively, but that would be a good idea to have one, yes.
Okay.
So I would imagine that would be provided.
Okay. All right, so that is that one. And I also have the question, what will happen if we don't have enough adults to cover every room? I just envision we have all these mini cohorts, that's going to take a large number of adults to cover in the event that we run out of adults. What are we going to do?
So we do have a survey that we could send to staff tomorrow, if it's okay with the board, it's been vetted by your attorney, it's one that's gone out to approximately 20 other districts. So it's, it meets the ADA compliance issues, and it would allow the staff to let us know if indeed there were circumstances that suggested that they would not be able to maybe come back into the building, maybe they, you know, there'd be some other options that we would provide. We could talk in length next week if we, if we sent out the survey tomorrow, and we got it back next Wednesday, we'd be able to report to the board with the attorney present. You know, here's, here's where we think we could be. We won't, you know, we would just have HR accept the surveys and there would be a report there. We'd want to protect names the best we could as far as all of that goes. But I think your attorney conversation would be important in regards to moving forward with this, with that, with that decision. So that's what I recommend. We have, Ann has copies, if you want to take one home and look at it, but I would hope that.
This is the survey?
Yep.
The film, not survey, it sounds like. It's a letter that will, well, not as, not as.
Not a survey, like here's 20 questions. No, just for the board, I think, that's.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think everyone else.
I want to know.
Oh, okay.
And then I'm going to skip my hybrid question, so the last one just being, I need an up-to-date staff opinion.
Well, that's where we would kind of get, oh, you need staff opinion on.
Right, like how staff is feeling about going remote or in-person learning, sort of what, do we have an up-to-date preference from staff?
I have in-depth questions about that too.
Okay. So I guess I'd ask Ann and Joe to respond, they were on the, came up with.
Can we go in-depth first, do that inform their responses? Okay. If you don't mind. Do you have more to go into that, or do you want?
Is it okay if?
Yeah, may I take one here, Sean?
Yes.
Thank you. So the staff survey, and I think this might be what Kayla's kind of talking about, to get their opinion. I've, like I said, I've been looking into what other districts have done. I have friends who teach in Brattleboro, even though I haven't, you know, delved into their plan, I've talked to them about what was sent out, and this is what we had spoken about, I believe, like last week, that I thought was going to happen, but maybe, you know, there's some miscommunication there. I understand the ADA survey was, you know, do you, one of these categories, childcare, medical condition, whatever, that, that's kind of separate. But the survey to see how the staff feels, like even other districts have done it, and you'll see in a bunch of these, Mananuck, Fall Mountains, a bunch of them in their, in their whole entire plan that's out there, proposed plan, I should say proposed plan, because no one's plan, I don't think, except for Brattlebrows, has been approved yet, but they have a whole different structure over there with their governor. But anyway, it's just like simple question and anonymous, which I know the survey that was sent out and had to be stopped was not anonymous the other week. So, and I know the board did do an anonymous survey two years ago, so there's a way to do it, and hopefully Debbie can help with that, refreshing everyone's memory of how to do that. But a simple question that other districts have used is, not even looking at specifics, but given the proposed plan, proposed concept of all remote, hybrid, or all-in, which are you most comfortable with? And it's a variety of ways, like all-in, somewhat comfortable, really comfortable, blah, 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 you know. Or another question that I know, WSISU, one of their work groups used, I don't think it came right from central office over there, but was, what is your level of comfort with coming back into the building? And, I mean, just simple questions to gauge that kind of, I thought that's what we were going to do too, so, okay. And we didn't.
And that's, we just would like, like, here are the proposed options, which do you prefer?
Yeah, which you prefer.
That's literally it. And it can be anonymous, it can be not anonymous, I just want to have an updated staff.
And one thing with talking about screenings, I saw Mananuck or Fall Mountain, I can't remember which, and I'm not proposing this as a question, but just to throw that out there, that was another question. Would you be comfortable, would you, which would you prefer? Kids get screened at home by parents and/or kids get screened at school, you know, just to gauge. And not saying they acted, because I could see some of the way their survey in Fall Mountain came out, it doesn't match what they are proposing, but it's just a way to gauge how people are feeling.
Julia, did you want to say something?
On the survey, I'll read this letter a little bit more in depth later, but I did think we had talked about a very simple, like what's your comfort level returning to school? What is your preference? You know, some basic questions, we're not asking any health questions, we're not asking anything that could at all be construed. I mean, this letter goes into depth, do you have reasons why you should have accommodations? I'm not even asking that. I'm like, how do you feel about returning to school? How do you feel about the kids being screened? Would be great to add on there. Just as simple, three or four bullet to get the pulse, because we were spending all this time and everybody is so stressed and the parents wanting to know, and my concern, I want to assure that if we decide to take these recommendations and do the hybrid and do the in-classer elementary, which I am in support of, that we're going to have the staff to support that in the fall. And I think their thoughts and feelings on that needs to be way high on our priority list before we can make any sort of decision.
Yeah, and they're the only group that hasn't been asked it. So yeah.
That was my main thing.
Yeah.
I don't think we can make a decision. Until we know what, how staff is feeling now. Because it was a different story in May than it is now, I think.
And they weren't even asked in May, the preference, so.
Right, yeah. It was discussed though, I feel like, you know, months have gone by though, I would like to see how people are feeling.
I'm certainly not opposed to a survey, but I'd ask Ann and Joe to kind of help explain to the board how the staff was, how the interest of the staff was determined by the various committees at each school.
Okay, just before you guys do, Jim, everyone else had a chance to speak, or not even?
Yeah.
Okay, who wants to address Wayne's?
So, yeah, it is kind of old information, because it was gathered during the two weeks of professional development time. Staff had the opportunity to, you know, funnel all the questions up to the steering committee, and the steering committee, I hope, I know what I did, I did read all the information that was given. And then the steering committee's charge was to come up with recommendations in the three areas which you had asked for. We, every week, Karen sent out, Karen Craig sent out, you know, here's the update, feed us with questions. So the steering committee's charge was to make the recommendations, and, you know, that's the recommendations that we made based on all the input that was gathered throughout that June through July 13th or even 17th date. Now, you know, I am hearing more and more, I think it's natural that everybody's getting a little bit more anxious about things as opening now is, it's still a month away, but it's creeping up on us, so people are sensing a lot more anxiety about it. And, but, you know, I've tried to encourage staff to let me know their anxiety, and some people have, but I haven't heard directly from a lot of people, and I don't know if that's normal in this situation, that you wouldn't tell your building principal. But I have heard from other staff members that there's growing anxiety, but it's a natural anxiety, and some of it, some of it has a strong basis and some of it is just watching to steer, steal Mrs. Fritig's ideas. You get so wrapped up in this, you know, I've never watched CNN for an hour a day at a time, and now I am. You know, I just need to say forget about CNN for the day, you know? So we did collect it.
If you recall, last week, I think you looked at the report for social emotional learning as part of any plan, and I think that we've done a lot with that with Eric Mann this summer already. And one of the areas that Joe alluded to was about the whole anxiety, how much of it is based in reality? Like, are you worried about your own children, your family members, your loved ones, because you don't know? Or is it because of perception of what's going on in all forms of media today? So there, there are different triggers for people, and one of the things that Eric Mann wants us to look at, regardless of how we reopen school, is how do we help our adults regulate their own anxiety so that we're ready to help kids regulate their fear, regardless again of any plan? In talking with teachers, and I talk with a lot of teachers because we're finishing the remote learning, hopefully by the end of this week, the one thing they really want, again, regardless of the plan, is more accountability. If we're remote, we want to see the kids logged in, 8:00 in the morning, I'm going to deliver my lesson, and I will take attendance and kids will engage. If I'm in my classroom, kids will be in attendance and they will engage. I think that's what we're, we're missing with the previous model that we kind of threw together. So regardless of what you decide or how the staff is feeling, there's a lot that we have to address.
So as I said, I'm certainly not adverse to a survey that's more current, but I thought we had agreed on a representative style of decision-making where we selected a group of people that represented every constituency, from parents to administrators to social workers to teachers and the para educators, and we were very careful with that selection process, so that by the end of the time that our staff went home, most of them, we had people to really dig deep on these various committees, it was on transportation, meals, we got to meet with the bus driver, we had to meet with the school people, we really drilled down, and just like at the legislature, we made decisions based on the information we had at that time, which was more than what was available in June. So if we want to just throw it out as a vote, I mean, we can do whatever the board wants, but the process by which we spent a lot of money on would be somewhat diverted in some way, surprise, it would probably, the decision typically, in best practice, would be less likely to be the best possible decision. But we can do it any way you want to do it.
Okay, so we're at quarter up. I am going to, we can talk more about the survey, I'm going to forego my questions for tonight. I do want to leave some extra time for the public because I think Liz is correct in that, you know, staff is very stressed out, and I wasn't lying, and I know that we're very stressed out as well. So I will give up my time for the staff, so why don't we wrap up the survey question? Can we do that? And then we'll turn it over to the public. Is everybody all right with that? All right, so Holly, you have comments?
Yeah, I just have just a clarification about the survey, and I appreciate, and I think, I know we all do. And, you know, we're an involved board, you know, we've dug into stuff, we've, we are losing sleep every night about this. Yeah, yeah. And, but I just want to clarify what you were saying about what was done in those two weeks of PD time when.
Hey, I'm so sorry. Brenda, are you meaning to share your screen with us?
There you go, a little good there. Just to clarify, when they met for those two weeks after classes wrapped up in their PLCs, my understanding from what we were told and what, you know, what I've, I have heard from teachers, what all that, is that, and also, like I said, but what we were told and what is in the report even, is the charge of the PLC groups, my understanding was to, okay, here are these three options that the school board wants you to look into, okay? How, working you through a PLC groups, and how will that, how could that work? Flesh it out. And then all of the PLC group comments were filtered through the principals up to the steering committee, but they. Um, but, the question of, and I know you said about social emotional piece, which we read about, but the parents have had multiple opportunities to have direct, which of these do you prefer? How, da-da-da, which is this, which is that, which, I mean, multiple surveys, parents have had. And, and I understand the value, of course, of what will happen during those PLC weeks, because that's how we got this sixty-four page document of fleshed out how it may work in all these different scenarios. But it doesn't appear to me, unless I'm missing it somewhere, and I very well might be, because I'm not an educator, I'm not, you know, and I'm digging through this the same as the other, other four of us, while we're also working our full-time jobs, so I might miss it. But there, was there ever, like several other districts have done, and what we afforded our parents the opportunity to have input on was, how do you, which do you prefer? What's your comfort level? Did that ever happen? And did the teachers, I know their answers, like I said, their comments were filtered through their principals. So, did they ever have this direct opportunity that so many other people, like, the, the staff and the students are the two groups in the building? And I feel like we've only directly heard from one of the groups.
All right, so, what does the board wanna do about a survey? I know we talked about it last week. Do we wanna do?
Yeah, I was thinking.
Do you wanna have them for, so we can, we can, we can go to them and then come back to this?
Yeah, I agree with that. My only thought is, they're not a representation of the whole staff, yeah, but it just gets a feeling.
I would like to get their feedback and get a feeling, and then we can go back to the survey question once we hear from the staff.
Absolutely.
You're all okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
All right, so, we're, we're gonna go to the public. Um, at eight fifteen, I'm gonna ask the board if you wanna extend, we can, we can extend in fifteen minutes increments if we need to. Is, are you guys okay with that? I do wanna keep it to the time we discussed, but I also want to hear from the staff. Okay, Anne, do you have a way to, can you go through and ask the staff first?
I can, yeah, but I'm going to, I'm going to start over here.
Okay. All right, so, members of the public, Anne Duario is gonna look at her screen, she's gonna go in an orderly fashion according to the grid that's here, and give everyone a chance to speak. Um, I am gonna ask that, you know, say what you feel, but kinda keep it to the point. Um, well, I don't, yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's seventy-seven people on here, so, you know, you know, please just, you know, keep it brief if you can.
Jody Holm? I'm gonna take this off.
I need to switch to, I'm getting a headache right now.
Uh, Jody Holm, class, do you have anything?
Uh, no, just in general, I can tell you that I am stressed out. I'm, I'm stressed out about the possibility of going back, I'm stressed out about the possibility of not going back. I think these are just tough decisions, and I think that in the end, we're gonna all be remote anyway. And that's it.
Thank you, Jody. Gia, do you have anything? Steve Becto, do you have anything?
No, just saying no to her decision, but thank you for all your hard work, and just keep asking questions.
Thank you. Megan LaBassar, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, I guess, um, originally, when we were, um, given some sort of input, you know, during that time, after remote learning, I feel like all of us, honestly, were just so ready to get back to like, unnormal, like some sense of normalcy. Um, I was myself, I was so ready for my kids to go back to school, I was ready to get back to being in the building. And then now, as it comes closer, I, I'm, I'm in a little bit of a panic mode, I gotta admit. Um, the thought of going back into the building, and especially working in like kindergarten, first grade, like those levels, um, and knowing that these kids are not being screened, if that's where we end up, um, due to HIPAA violations, um, that kinda puts me in a tough spot. I do have a very medically fragile child at home, and putting myself in that position, um, and leaving it up to parents, these parents have been out of work, they are going to give their kids some Motrin in the morning and send them to school. I mean, we've seen it a hundred times, and um, and I feel like if we're not doing any sort of screening, um, that that puts a lot of people in a super tough spot. So, that's kinda where I'm at. I think I'm, I think we're all kinda there, at least with the anxiety of no matter what happens. Um, so, but thank you for taking it into consideration.
Thank you, Megan. Gina Hammett, do you have anything?
Um, hi, yeah, um, I have a lot of concerns about being back in the building full-time. Um, and the model that was presented as hybrid, like Holly said, is actually, looks like everyone's in the building in the middle of high school, um, full-time. Um, so I have a lot of concerns about that. I mean, for months, we've been wearing masks, and um, physical distancing, and staying home, and not going on vacation, and not seeing extended family. So, the thought of being back in the building with two-hundred-and-fifty people again is, yeah, I mean, it's really, it's, it's stressful for sure, and I know it's stressful for everyone, and thank you to the board, and the admin, and, and the committees for doing all this work. Um, so, that's my, my level of stress at the moment, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you, Gina. Um, I, alls I see is Marcy Anna love candy. Do you have any questions for the board?
Yeah, sorry about that, my daughter put that in there. Uh, just, we're just trying to figure everything out, just like you all, wondering what's gonna happen when they, when they return, if they return. Is it going to be, you know, partial, full-time, you know, that kinda thing?
All right, thank you very much. Kathy, I don't know which Kathy this is.
Are you? I don't have a microphone. The laptop she was using isn't working, so if you're talking about that, Kathy.
Well, me.
I don't really have anything to add, that hasn't already been added right now.
Okay, thank you. Caitlin, Caitlin, do you have anything to say? Caitlin?
Yes.
Oh, you're, you're still on mute. Okay, go ahead.
No, I, I just think it's, it's a difficult decision either way, but right now, where the numbers are so low in Hinsdale, um, I really think it makes sense for us to at least get our students in for a few weeks, so we can see them, so we can get to know them, and um, I strongly feel, just, I'm sure others do as well, that we will go to remote learning eventually, anyway.
Thank you. Elise, do you have anything else you wanna add?
I, I think I'm all set. I just wanted to add, I wrote in the, um, one thing about screening that I did write in the comments is, I wanna be clear that we are not screening at the door, or are, we're recommending not screening at the door, but we would be screening if there was a child that was sick, or a child that, you know, looked ill, a child that had maybe a complication, they would come right to the health office and get screened there. Um, so there would be screening, but just not at admission to the building. Um, I feel sort of like the same, I feel that we need to get the kids back, we need to see the kids. I'm concerned about, um, I'm concerned a little about, um, like, children not being seen by mandated reporters, um, to DCYF, and I'd like, in some way, may it be hybrid or whatever, see the kids, and I agree that we're probably gonna go hi, uh, remote, so we, I think we need to have a strong remote plan.
Thank you, Elise. Brenda, do you have anything? Okay. iPhone Liz, do you have anything?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, nope, I'm pretty, after thirty years, September will be my thirtieth year, I'll take whatever you guys wanna give me.
All right, thank you very much. Julie, do you have, do you have anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Liz? Liz Gengary? You have to unmute, Liz.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, guys. So, I'm gonna go off the grid, and I'm gonna be not popular, and I'm gonna say, why are we paying millions of dollars to keep the NBA in a bubble, but we are gonna put our kids as experiments? I am so worried about this, I cannot even express it enough. I know it is not gonna be a popular opinion, but I love my kids, and I don't want them at risk. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Liz. Brad, Bradford Manton, do you have anything to say? I, we cannot hear you, if you have anything to say, unmute, please. Okay, Lindsay?
Um, I, just quick, real fast points, um, if you're thinking about sports, but in the last meeting, you were thinking about cutting ELOs, I just want you to weigh, um, those. Um, also, for being part of the committee, um, I discussed a staff survey at every single meeting, subcommittee meetings, I was on two, and then in a larger meeting as well, it was, um, discussed, I discussed it at length, and it was denied. Um, that will not be popular, that I'm saying that. Um, and I just want the staff to know that I said it numerous times, and it was denied by admin. So, there was time to get it done, and I apologize, I tried, um, and I failed you. So, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Lindsay. Um, Wesley?
So, I know that our numbers in Hinsdale have been low, and I'm so pleased about that. My worry is that, um, now that things are lightening up places, that families are now going elsewhere, and our numbers may not remain low, what, if we go back to school. Everybody, um, when we first go back, the regular cold and the germs go through the building in the elementary school like crazy anyways, so that is a huge concern for my, for me. Um, I don't envy you guys to have to make this decision, it's not going to be easy, and I just worry that we're not gonna know if we made the right decision, but we'll know that we made the wrong decision.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Paula Snide? You have to unmute, okay?
Okay, got it, thanks. So, my concern is probably a little bit different than the high school, because, um, I'm expected to go in to meet sixteen kindergarteners that I've never met before, and we have to stay at least three feet apart, and we can't play with anything else. So, you're five years old, and you're going to be expected to sit at your seat if we go the all-in model. You sit in your seat, or you stay in your little box that I designed for you for six hours a day. Oh, and you eat lunch in the classroom as well, and you're not going to be able to, um, work or play with your friends or anything like this. So, that's my concern. I wish we could go back to when my kids were younger and go to a half-day kindergarten, so the sixteen kids could be split up into eight in the morning, and I have time to clean with the cleaning supplies I'm hoping that the school will provide, um, and then we'll have another group of eight in the afternoon. So, I have an easier time spreading out eight rather than sixteen. So, that's my biggest concern right now, how am I going to fit sixteen five-year-olds into a, a space, but you're not allowed to touch the dollhouse, or any of the free items, or the Legos, or anything? We can't do that. Uh, so, my, my concern is, their stress level is going to be high, I wanna make their very first experience in school a good one, and I, I, I'm right now struggling, I don't know if I can do that. So, I wish we could go back to a half-day kindergarten model, that's why my, my, uh, thought is different than what you'd see at the middle-of-high-school level.
Okay, thank you, Paula. Cheryl? You have to unmute.
Yep, I got it, thanks. Um, I just wanna say that, I mean, I've been working ESY this summer with some of the most medias kids that we've got, some of the pretty severe specialized kids, they've lost a lot not being in school. And I know it's challenging, I know it's hard, but I think at least some of these kids, some of these most intense needed kids, need to be here. I know it's going to be hard, and maybe not everybody should be in, and some shouldn't. I've got other kids that are medically fragile and not, shouldn't be in school, but there are some kids that have missed and regressed a great deal from not being here for the last several months.
Thank you, Cheryl.
I just wanna say, good luck, because I certainly don't envy the board's decision, and you're damned if you do, and you're damned if you don't, and all the best to you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Jess Green, do you have anything? Erica, do you have anything?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Uh, Quentin B. Mary Wisman, do you have anything?
Um, yes, well, I guess I do, I, I agree with what Paula was saying, I totally understand um, where she's coming from, and I think it makes sense what she's saying. Um, also Cheryl Momoney, um, she's got an eye right now on, on children who she's been working with, um, which for most of us, we don't have that. Um, I think we need to keep the kids at the forefront, and they're the ones who, you know, if we're, if we're doing the sanitation, keeping the masks on, keeping our distance like we're supposed to, doing the best with that that we can, and continue to clean, um, you know, it's, this is supposed to be all about learning, and those kids are, we are failing a generation if we don't get back to school. Um, I also just wanna thank everybody for working on this, Sean Leary and Kayla and admin, um, hard job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Okay, Katie Hires, do you have anything?
Yes, I just have two things. Um, one, I wonder, for those of you who don't know, I'm the school counselor at the elementary school, and I do wonder about the emotional toll for some of these students being put in these seven-foot boxes and being told to stay there, and I'm wondering what, I know we have some plans to help that, but I do wonder what that will do to students emotionally. And I'm also, to speak to a survey, I just, um, I think staff are concerned about job security for themselves as well, so speaking up in a uni, in a anonymous way might be really great to get a better picture of where staff are. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Buckley?
Yes, um, I have concerns about having all the kids back. I also have been working ESY this summer, and I agree they, I have seen some regression, but at the same time, I'm also exposed to bodily fluids on a daily behaviors that could potentially put me at a higher risk, and I have underlying health conditions myself, as well as people in my family, so I don't know how comfortable I am with potentially bringing this home to my family, and it potentially exposing others to it, as well as the kids coming in, they're not gonna be in a room by themselves, they're going to be with ten, fifteen other students, so they're exposing other students as well as the staff, and potentially bringing it home to their families. So, that is a really big concern for me.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna read Quentin B's, um, statement, sorry. My mic isn't working, sorry, I have two medically fragile kids, and they will be remote learning. It's not worth the risk, my son has received ESY services and has done amazing. Kudos to the staff that has worked with them this summer. Thank you. Katie Savory?
Hi, um, I am, I'm worried as a, as a special educator, um, I know that typically, I, you know, push into classrooms and then work with small groups with social distancing, that wouldn't be possible. Um, this year, I will be sharing a classroom, but then, again, sharing a classroom, if I have six students from one class and share a small classroom with another special educator, I may not be able to use that room, and that, therefore, I don't want to be wandering around the building trying to find a place for my students to work. Um, so, that's my main concern.
Okay, Sarah Donnie, Sarah Donniehugh?
Hi, yes, I just wanna thank the board for discussing the idea of a survey, I think it's crucial right now to, to show respect to the staff, to survey the entire staff at this point. Um, June was June, July is different, uh, a lot has changed, I'm getting a lot of conversations. June was June. July is different. A lot has changed. I'm getting a lot of conversation from staff around very high levels of concern. And I think it would show respect to our staff community to survey us, all of us. I think that's very important before a decision is made. I want to thank the board for making that a priority of discussion tonight.
Thank you. Teresa D'Orio? Teresa, do you have anything? Okay, I'm going to call on Gia. I did call on you, but you must have missed it.
Yeah, my phone tweaked out. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah. Just going off of what Cheryl said, and as a matter of fact, Cheryl and I, we discussed this this morning together, and I too work with the severe-needs kids as well. And, you know, ESY has been great, but it's been kind of like a temporary Band-Aid, especially for those kids who have lost so much with the remote learning. So, you know, I mean, I, as a parent, I'm perfectly fine with coming in and working with my kids. I just want to make sure, like, those severe-needs kids aren't left behind, because, you know, they can't advocate for themselves. And their parents, just like everybody else's parents, you know, they have such a hard time, you know. So any model, I'm fine with, but as long as those kids, you know, are going to be okay, I'll be fine. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Lynn Ether? Okay, I don't know who user or user are. There's two of them. So I'll go to Tom O'Connor, sorry. Tom, do you have anything?
I appreciated everything that everyone has said here. I certainly respect the concern that at some point, we may be fully remote. And I think that we've had an opportunity to function in a remote environment, and there's plenty more to be learned and constructed there. My position is somewhat unique as a 65-year-old with underlying health concerns in a business function that doesn't involve students in a classroom, and no students, no children at home. I have the opportunity to be remote in a way that certainly people who are dealing with students don't have. I don't have high anxiety about our situation, but I have to say, I am completely angered by the situation that we're all facing together. And the fact that the problems of our society are pushed down on the school district to resolve, and we're put in this kind of a situation, is absolutely unimaginable to me. And I wish that the powers that be, not talking about the school board, but talking about state and federal government, would certainly address some of the underlying concerns. Yeah.
Donna Foster? Do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to say that none of this has been easy. I do think a staff survey would be a good idea, because having worked on the committee, from day to day, as we got more information, things were back and forth a lot. So I think taking another measure of where the staff is at would be a good thing. I do want to thank everybody that put in all the hard work. I don't envy our school board their decisions, but I do trust in them to make the best decision they can with the information they have.
Thank you, Donna. Patty, do you have anything? Patty Wallace?
I don't have anything specifically, but I do support having a staff survey. So thank you for that consideration.
Thank you. Teresa, I guess she didn't hear, so I'll read Teresa's statement. I wanted to echo Caitlin and Elise about seeing the kids in opening school, knowing we will likely go, I think, remote. We need a solid plan. Thank you to the board for their consideration and thoughts. I also wanted to add that in our PLCs, we had a very open opportunity to be vocal and express our concerns. I also think it is the hardest choice you will face. However, this decision needs to be made. It's hard to compare what other districts are doing when they have a plan. Maybe think of it as a decision and then an implementation plan. So I think, make a decision and an implementation plan. Thank you for all you do. Okay, Jess Mahoney, do you have anything?
Yes, hi. First of all, thank you for coming together and listening to all of us. You have a very tough decision to make. I just wanted to say that we all love our kids, and we want the best for them. So I think the question that we need to be asking is, which option is the safest? The fact is, when we closed the school, there were 41 COVID deaths in our country, and now there are about 150,000, and that rises when we gather together. We know remote learning didn't work well, because we didn't have time to prepare. So let's work smarter and not harder, and give us the time to prepare for remote now, so that we have a plan, and that we don't have to scramble when flu season comes and we go remote anyway.
Thank you. We're trying to limit. We're at 8:11 now, and I'm only on page two.
So is the board still okay with adding another 15-minute increment at this point?
Okay. Victoria Robo? Do you have anything?
Yes, thank you. So I just want to say, I am fully in support of remote learning. I'm teaching summer school right now, and it's been really difficult with regular ed kids, to, you know, remind them to keep their masks on, to keep social distancing. We go outside, and they're just begging to go on the playground, and they can't use the playground. There's just so many things. It's really nice to be with them, but there's so many things that they're struggling with, too. Also, as being on the committee, we did talk about, if we were remote, how we would be able to get small cohorts of kids in still. So that could be, you know, like, special ed kids. So that's just something to think about, because I know a lot of people spoke about how, you know, remote doesn't work for special ed kids. But there are options. If you are remote, to be able to pull in, like, four kids at a time and work with them. So just a reminder.
Okay, thank you. Daya Germain, do you have anything to say?
I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Toward?
Hi there. I'll go ahead and email any questions or concerns, just to save time.
You can have my email to do that?
Okay. I will do that, Ann. Thank you.
Okay. I'll just forward it to Community Connections. James McDonald, do you have anything?
Just want to thank everyone involved for all the hard work and time everyone's putting in.
Okay, Abby Garrish, do you have anything?
Hi. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the board valuing staff input, and I support, fully support, a survey to gauge how the entire staff is feeling, and not just this steering committee.
Thank you. Julian Persan, do you have anything?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kathy, again. I don't know who this is. It's not Kathy Bean. Kathy, no. Okay, Cassie Wicker?
Yes, I have a few things. One, I think that educating our kids is the most important thing, and this would be a hard decision. So, thank you. Two, I work with preschool, and we're going to have to be sanitizing. Like, every time we go into the bathroom, we'll have to dress with full PPE, D or E, whatever it's called. And I just feel like educating is the most important. If we're going to spend all our time cleaning, wouldn't it better just to be remote? If that's the way we're going to end up anyways. That's all.
Thank you, Cassie. Which one? Okay, Lynn Ether. Sorry I missed my chance. I was just learning to use Zoom. I'm most concerned with children in both the high school and elementary school, and what the decision will be. My high schooler did not do well this past remote learning plan. With my child going into kindergarten, what exactly would be expected of her in the classroom? What support will there be for parents to teach our children at home? Okay. Terry, do you have anything? Terry Droeg?
It's not Terry. It's Terry Whalen, but thanks.
Sorry, Taylor. But that's okay. I just want to say that I know you all have a hard decision as well. I do support being back in the classroom for the kids at least part of the time. I know my child doesn't do that well with remote learning, and she's going to be a senior in high school. So I can't even imagine what it must be like for the elementary-age kids. That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Jen Taggart?
Hi. I am in support of remote learning. However, if we are in the building, and masks are not mandatory, we need to have access to full PPE at all times, and the cleaning supplies that we are going to need to sanitize our room throughout the day.
All of that, all of that we have. I can, if I, I just cleaned out the conference room, so we could have the meeting in here. But if anybody wants to stop in the business office, they can see all the PPE we have, and I have another shipment coming tomorrow. Sarah Burgess?
I'm all set for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb?
I just want to, Paula said the same thing. It was very hard with little kids to try to keep them in their seats for five and a half days. But also, on the other hand, it would be very hard to remote teach them when we don't know them yet. So thank you so much for all your thoughts, and I don't envy this decision.
Thank you. Penny? Penny, do you have anything to say? Okay, I'm going to assume not. Brooke? Sherry Hanley? Shawna Cowan, do you have anything to say?
So I do, real quick. I'm in support of whatever decision is made. I also have a senior in high school who I think the in-school learning will be best for him. But I have a daughter who I think is missing the social aspect of it all, too. So I support whichever, whatever we do, whether it's remote learning or in-school.
Thank you. Shelley Behane? Okay, Crystal Gaffney?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay, Matt Kennedy?
I just want to thank everyone for all the effort they're putting in to coming up with a decision and come up with plans. This is probably the most difficult time in education history. And Tom O'Connor kind of said, a lot of it was also on my mind. So thank you, everyone.
Great. Thank you. Melissa Lowe?
I'm good. Thank you.
Sarah Green?
I'm all set. Thank you.
You're welcome. Julie Kenyon? Melissa Wood? Jessica? Karen Hammond?
Yeah, hi. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll try to be really quick with this. I don't want to keep beating up the screening question, but I do really feel, even though the CDC says what they say, and I understand that the kids can be asymptomatic, but part of the questionnaire, and I know I mentioned this in the staff, the chat comments there, but I work at an assisted living facility in Keene. And I get HIPAA. That's what healthcare is all about. But I'm thinking, if that screening is not just the temperature screen for those that are asymptomatic, but kind of what Leslie Parkinson alluded to a few minutes ago, you know, some of those questions that we are screened is, have you traveled somewhere where COVID is around? Or have you even traveled to a different state? That might be something that would be good to ask the kids, you know, not even thinking, oh yeah, we have family that lives in such and such, or we just went, whatever. If for some reason, we don't, you know, we don't know just from Facebook, you know, where people are going, but if they're going elsewhere with their families, that might be just a good question that's worth asking. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Karen. And I did put up an email if anybody has, wants to email any questions, because we only have about 10 more minutes. Communityconnections@hnhsd.org. Okay, Ally Mangan, do you have anything?
Hi, yes. First of all, just thank you to everyone for all the hard work that they're doing. And secondly, Sarah Donahue wrote in the chat about a different plan for kindergarten and pre-K. And I think that that's a really, really good thing to consider, like Deb and Paula were saying, seeing the kids and getting to know them, but then also having some remote learning aspects, so that they weren't in school for that long of a period of time. And then the other thing I want to ask the board to consider is looking at Menadnox Plan that they released like two days ago. My son goes there. It's really in-depth, and it's a hybrid model of remote and in-person.
Thank you, Ally. Rachel Girwa?
Actually, Heather. Thank you.
Hi, Heather.
Hi. I just wanted to, again, thank everybody that's making these decisions. It's not easy, as everyone has said. And I also wanted to give notes to everyone that did the kindergarten video that was released today, because that was really great.
Thank you. Catherine Lynch? April? Oh, Catherine, sorry. Wait, April. Go ahead, Catherine.
Hi, I really don't have anything to say, other than it is a huge task to take on. We shouldn't be put in this position. I agree with Tom. And I think there is a solution that would help everybody, a hybrid solution of some kind. Kids need to get back, and I would like a staff survey, too.
Okay, thank you. April? Do you have anything, April?
Sure. So first of all, again, like everybody else, thank you. This is an impossible decision to make, I'm sure. I'm torn, because my son's going into middle school. So he's transitioning from elementary school to middle school, and already doesn't have that transitional stuff that was happening before, you know, COVID happened. So I'm in favor of a hybrid. I'm also, I'm in favor of anything that's going to keep our kids safe. I think some sort of screening needs to happen, because I'm, like it was said before, a lot of parents send their kids to school sick, you know. It's going to be hard when they got to work to not send them to school. So it's kind of an impossible decision for them also. And, you know, God bless you all.
Thank you. Joan Fisk, do you have anything? iPad Pro? Megan Olmstead? Mrs. Bauer? Ann? Chloe H.? I did do Shelley. Yes, people leave. Okay, so I'm at, okay, now Kelsey?
Yeah, I have a lot of concerns. We have talked What just happened? I'm just trying to get out of the Sorry. We've talked a lot about, like, what's best for the kids and stuff like that. And I think we're really, I'm very concerned about support staff, because we don't get benefits. And, you know, we don't get insurance and stuff. And I know that it's not a contract. We weren't able to, like, talk about the contract before all this. But I think it's incredibly unkind and unfair to expect support staff to do all this additional stuff. And we can't even guarantee that, you know, our health would be taken care of, should, God forbid, we get sick. And then on top of that, if we have to take the 72 hours off, it might come from our, you know, our sick days. And so then, are people going to not take those sick days, because they can't afford to, and stuff like that, and like, can't afford to go to the doctor and all of this? And like, I'm saying that even though I myself got onto the insurance, because I'm terrified of getting COVID, and, you know, and, you know, going bankrupt because I can't afford to pay for it. And even still, I'm still going to be like five hundred dollars in the red every month I'm on it. So, I have a lot of concerns about that. And I feel very undervalued that, you know, in these unprecedented times, that even though it's not a year we talk about our contract, that something wasn't done for us. To like, you know, show like, oh, we support you, so we're gonna show that by supporting you. And I sound really angry, and I guess I am to a certain extent. And it probably sounds really selfish, but like, you know what I mean? So, that's my two cents, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, does that everybody?
I think. Has, has everyone spoken that wanted to speak? I think we're okay.
Okay, so we're just about at.
Sean?
The microphone, I gotta remember to bring the mic. Okay, so a few, uh, closing things. We wanted to finish up the discussion on the survey real quick. Um, is everybody okay if we do a few minutes over eight thirty?
Yep.
Okay, um, so let's finish up that discussion on the survey. Um, you guys, it's up to you, what do you want to do? We'll go.
We're over here in the dark.
So, what your question is, do we want to do a survey? Yes, I am in favor of doing a survey, a simple one, um, with, you know, what's your preference of the three plans? What's your comfort level, something like that? And I know some people say we shouldn't look at what other districts have done. Some people have said, well, you know, we could use it as a guide. But I print it off and anyone can go out and look. Menadnox is on their website. Menadnox had like a nine-question survey. I'm proposing one question from Menadnox survey, which is basically what's your preference of these three?
Okay.
Yep.
Kayla?
Of course. I thought that we had agreed that we needed a survey. I know I've, I feel like I'm kind of beating a dead horse over here saying like I don't want to make a decision until we have that answer. I don't, we asked parents, we gave them the opportunity. I want staff to have the same opportunity. So, I'm a little disappointed it hasn't already been done. Because now I feel like we can't move forward and parents. Yes, I definitely want a survey.
Julia?
Yeah, I certainly, um, I think I'm the one that brought our, we, we started the discussion last week. I'm a huge advocate of the, of a survey, very short, very simple. I think it speaks to our respect for our staff. Um, and I think that as everyone else said, it's critical to get their input for both that reason and just to make sure that we'll have the numbers we need in the, in the fall. So, I a hundred percent support a survey.
Thank you, uh, yeah, I agree with, uh, Sarah Donahue that, uh, should, it would show respect to the staff. I think short survey is good, uh, with just a few specific questions. But also, uh, one question, uh, one spot where they can add a specific recommendation such as some of the people did tonight. Yeah, yeah, like a specific recommendation.
All right, I'm gonna mirror the sentiments of the other school board members. So, Wayne, we would like to do a, um, survey, we would like to get that out as soon as possible. Uh, we need it for our next meeting. Anonymous survey. Um, and we need that for, uh, it, well, actually in advance of our April fifth meeting. Okay. So, tomorrow morning, if I go through, put together the survey that I think people are looking for and see if Anne can do it anonymously, we could send it out tomorrow and have it back next Wednesday for a meeting if the board wants it. Is that, is everyone happy with that timeframe?
Yes.
Okay, well, and that comes to my next question because I'm obliged to ask, does anyone want to make a decision tonight? Or do we feel that we can make a decision tonight? I, I know we all want to. So, so that was actually kind of a stupid question. All right, so, but I, but.
In addition to the surveys, the conditions change like kind of daily, you know, weekly basis. So, by waiting to get this feedback back, coupled with the current conditions, the local conditions, will help us make the best possible choice, which is what we're trying to do.
I, I agree.
We also have legal questions for Matt Upton that I don't feel comfortable moving ahead with until we've spoken, spoken with him.
Yep. Nope, that's all final, kind of obliged to ask though, so, um.
One more thing, yes, I agree with Holly. Um, the, uh, monthly, um, NSBA, A, ASPJ meeting came in, uh, magazine came in today. And there's a very good article on re-entry in the law. So, if any, if anybody, uh, has the time, it's like a three or four-page article, multiple good articles, that's the best one. Uh, you should be getting this magazine.
Well, we got mine today, how did you already read yours?
No, it's, it's Jim. All right, all right, let's, it's already late and we're already past everything, so let's, uh, let's keep on track. All right, so, uh, the only other thing that I had written down, um, it was actually part of, uh, you know, my, my questions that I skipped. You know, I think that, and, and the board can disagree if they want. I think all of the components that we're looking at and all of our, all of the plans that we're looking at, all of the different options involve some form of remote. I mean, they all do. And as has, you know, um, been spoken with the public and we have mentioned it too, you know, there's a good chance that we'll go remote. So, I think that regardless of whatever plan we choose, I feel confident, you know, telling the administration, nail down that remote. You know, move forward with that, nail down the remote, make it the best remote that we can have because we're gonna use it. We're gonna use it regardless of what we choose, uh, whether we want to or not. So, I feel comfortable, you know, if, if we don't, we're not gonna make a decision, that's fine. But I feel comfortable and you guys can object if you want, saying please move forward with remote. You know, please perfect that to the best you can and, um, because we're gonna need it. Anyone have any, Julia?
Yeah, I think we made that pretty clear last week as well at our meeting is that whether we go with the recommendations, uh, we still need to have, feel very strongly, we still need to have a super strong remote plan in place.
Yep, agree one hundred percent. Jim?
Yeah, I agree.
Um, the, another suggestion that I want to make to the board, um, and actually Jim had this suggestion. And Holly shared an article, I'm actually combining two suggestions. I'm combining a suggestion that Jim had that the board, um, do one of its tours of the buildings, uh, prior to opening. So, we can see that everything is what it needs to be and we can be comfortable and, and know what it is. And I want to, I, I want you guys to think about this. Holly had sent me an article, um, that showed what a school district did as far as, um, inviting certain people in to see what a three-foot distance between students and desks and stuff looks like and what a six-foot distance looks like. So, they had, uh, two classrooms set up, one each way. And I think they actually did a whole walkthrough of the day. So, this is what it looks like when your kid gets on the bus. This is what it looks like when your kid walks into school. This is what their classroom looks like. And, and I don't know that we necessarily need to do anything that extensive. But me personally, I'm in favor of combining that idea with Jim's idea. So, we can actually see, you know, and the board can see and whoever we invite in can actually see what these kids would be sitting in, you know, day after day until this is all over. So, if you guys are in favor of that, we can put that on our list.
Yes.
Yes.
I have one more question. I know, Wayne, you mentioned that if you get the survey right out, we would have it by our next meeting. Ideally for me personally, if we could get that information before we sit down at the table, so that we have some time to digest it and think about how we feel about it and put it, make notes on it. It get, it's hard when we just get the information when we get to the meeting. So, if we could get that a, a little ahead of the meeting, that would be ideal.
If you want it by Tuesday, if you can say and get it pushed up next Tuesday. I think people are pertinent right now, I don't think they'll linger, I think they'll.
Yeah, I think you're gonna get a very quick response.
All right. Okay. So, Tuesday? For next Tuesday.
By Tuesday morning at eight o'clock.
Okay. And then we'll send it to you right away.
Excellent, thank you.
Is everybody okay with that? All right, and so, um, we have a meeting scheduled for August fifth. That was the day that we determined, um, we could make a decision. And, um, bear with me, I just want to look at my calendar here. So, that's Wednesday. And when? Well, we should, I mean, we, we've kind of put that August fifth date out there, all right? And I, uh, as much as we need to have as much information and we need to be, you know, as comfortable as we can with the decision, we still owe it to our staff, we owe it to the community, you know, to be as timely as possible. I think that we are being responsible in not rushing and getting all the information that we can. But we can't push it out forever either, I mean, we just, we just can't. So, I would like to set that August fifth as our decision date. Wayne, when, when were you saying that we could meet with Matt Upton? Well, what we request with Matt, if you wanted to meet at six fifteen, I thought we could request a five-thirty meeting with Matt, a Zoom meeting right here. It would be a non-public meeting because it would be with your attorney. And then at six fifteen, would that work and relative to the starting of, okay. So, I think forty-five minutes with him would probably do it, he's pretty succinct. So, on, on the fifth? On fifth. Okay, um, no, I'm.
Right here, right?
Jim, Jim, sometimes you have trouble, you're good?
Yeah.
All right, um, so, let's set it for five thirty, all right? I am going to put it out there that, you know, I deliver mail during the day, Wednesday is shopper day. It takes extra time, the mail is horrible. If I'm late, Holly will open the meeting and then I will be here as soon as I can, okay? But I don't want to delay anything for me. All right. Five thirty. Well, that's the next question. Does?
We do our, look at a classroom.
I'm not sure if that'd be enough time to, so, all right, so we have a tentative meeting scheduled, uh, for Thursday. Do we want to keep that meeting? Do we not want to keep the meeting? We could do that walkthrough, we could do that. I don't know if that's time enough for Sean to set up those areas.
I don't feel like we're gonna have enough additional information between now and Thursday to make.
And, and that's, and that's kind of where I'm leaning to.
If it's a meeting meeting, then we.
Right, yeah.
I agree.
All right, so let's get rid of the Thursday meeting. And we'll figure on doing a marathon session probably on the fifth. I've already taken those, the fifth and the sixth off of work in preparation for that, so. All right, is there anything else from anybody?
Yeah.
Jim?
An HSBA, uh, sent a notice out tonight, um, that on Thursday at eleven thirty, Commissioner Edelblue is addressing the joint session, uh, House and Senate again. And, um, we're invited to, uh, attend it virtually, but you have to pre-register. So, if everybody looks at their email, they can look at that.
I think like you said, that is a Zoom, I signed up for that, that is a Zoom rather than a webinar. Because I, there have been times where I want to look at it at my lunch break, but oh, that's a Zoom, I can't do it. But yes, so just so everyone knows, that's a Zoom, so, yeah.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? Am I missing anything? Because there's a lot to, does anybody know if I'm missing anything?
No, I have checked off everything you told me to make sure you did.
All right, awesome, thank you, thank you very much. All right, well, then I'm looking for motion to adjourn. All right, we have motion in a second to adjourn, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned, thank you all very much.